Once they're done, they will be in the room today to start their regular meeting. So if you want to submit a speaker slip for any items on or not on the agenda tonight, please complete a speaker slip and you can find it next to the door here and pen to the container. And if you're online, you can raise your hand when the item is being called, or if you want to speak on items not on the agenda, I would recommend that you raise your hand now. And this is where I...
January 28th, 2025, Millbrae City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:17 PM. Senator Clark, would you please do a roll call?
Senator Lee, Mayor, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Councilmember Ronald D.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hollibur.
Present.
Mayor Fong.
Here.
All the members of City Council are present.
Thank you so much, and for those who are able, please stand with the pledge of allegiance. Please be seated. And happy Lunar New Year to everyone. Tonight is the New Year's Eve for Lunar New Year, and it's good to see all the faces. And to that end, the first item on the agenda is the ceremonial presentation proclaiming the January 29th, 2025 as Lunar New Year, and we have Councilmember Cissy Riley leading us on this.
Hey, everyone. Thank you so much for coming here. Happy Lunar New Year. I have good news for you. Since 2019, our California officially Lunar New Year has become state holiday, so we can enjoy Happy New Year, Alera New Year. In celebration of Lunar New Year, the city of Millbrae drawing families around the world in welcome the year of Snake on January 29th, 2025. And the city of Millbrae realize the invaluable contributions of our Asian community members, organizations, and businesses, and is grateful for their dedication and culture matter enrich our city. And the city of Millbrae extends its warm wishes to all residents and beyond for the joyful and healthy year of the snake. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And then we have Karen Lamb from Self Help for the Elderly, and she's a director there accepting this proclamation today. Karen, do you have any few words for us for Lunar New Year?
I want to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year and Gong He Fat Choy. A little bit early, but still the same. And I want to say on behalf of Self Help for the Elderly, we are very appreciative of Mayor Fong and all the City Council members for recognizing also Lunar New Year for tomorrow. And we also thank very much the city of Millbrae for all their support. Thank you very much.
And thank you so very much. You're lucky to join us for a bit of a photo op and with the perfect color for Lunar New Year. And also just wanted to thank the audience because tonight is the New Year's Eve, and typically this is the evening where all the family get together for dinner. And thank you for joining us on this beautiful New Year's Eve on January 28th. Next item is the presentation of the Sheriff's Office Police Bureau for Millbrae on their annual report. And we have Chief Eamon Allen joining us today to give us an update on service delivery. Chief.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council members. Captain Eamon Allen with San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Chief of Police Services for the city of Millbrae. Tonight I'll be presenting our annual report for the last year, touching on some statistics as well as some of the community engagement events we've engaged in over the past year. Slide please. So just briefly, as our bureau breaks down, again, as I mentioned, I'm the Chief of Police Services. We have four patrol teams. We have two teams that patrol during the day and two at night. At any given time, we can have a sergeant and as many as five deputies patrolling the city of Millbrae, as few as two. We also have a motor deputy that's responsible for traffic enforcement and education during the week. And then at night, we have two different patrol canines that are assigned to North County but are also an asset that are available for the city of Millbrae. Just briefly, some of the specialties from our staff that are assigned here to the city of Millbrae. We have some incredibly talented individuals, including range masters. We have field training officers, defensive tactics instructors, and drone operators. So a ton of resources here in the city. Slide please. There you can see our four teams pictured, Team One and Team Two, as I mentioned, our day shift teams. Team Three and Team Four are night shift, and there's Canine Aaron prominently displayed. So next slide, please. We have four community service officers assigned to the city of Millbrae, including, I should note, CSO Carlos Guzman, who has been tasked with training CSOs from all over the county. So he's incredibly knowledgeable, and he's been entrusted with that. So a great resource for our city. Next slide, please. Last year, we had 16,350 calls for service in the city. This is one of the busiest bureaus, if not the busiest, in the county as far as the Sheriff's Office Patrol bureaus. As you can see, our calls for service continue to go down, and they were averaged 3:14, 3 minutes and 14 seconds last year in the city of Millbrae. These increased patrol times or response times are really a tribute to the city's investment in our personnel as well as the quality of deputy that's assigned here. Let me note that with our recent shift bid, each of the deputies, and we have quite a few here in sergeants, each deputy and sergeant that works in the city of Millbrae has chosen to be here. They've actually bid to come here. So I think it's really a credit to the city and the support that you all have given them as well as the community engagement that they choose to be a part of this community as patrol deputies. It's one of the busiest, as I mentioned, bureaus in the office, and they still seek out the opportunity to work here. Next slide, please. So we have two different kinds of calls for service. We have citizen initiated, which are calls for service when somebody dials 911 or non-emergency line. We also have what's called deputy initiated or proactive. Our citizen initiated activity is a little flat, or excuse me, down a little bit from the year prior, but as you can see, our deputy initiated calls for service have gone up. So the folks that work here really take those calls when they're not answering calls for service, they take it upon themselves to do that proactive activity to really take opportunities to enhance the safety and security of the city. Over just over a third of our calls last year were deputy initiated, which is fantastic. Next slide, please. So we switched last year to the National Incident Based Reporting System. As you can see, our reports taken are about the same. Our violent crimes are slightly up, but our property crimes are slightly down. As you can see, the vast majority of our crime reports are property crimes, about 84%. Next slide, please. Our crime clearance rates slightly down in violent, but as you can see, greatly up in property crimes. And DUI arrests have climbed slightly from 25 to 27 last year. Next slide, please. So this is a by-quarter breakdown of some of our more significant crimes, the crimes we track here in town over the last eight quarters. Generally, our crimes have been flat, if not down. The spikes you see, commercial is pretty flat, residential, commercial burglaries, residential burglaries, pretty flat. Auto burglaries are down significantly. The two spikes you'll see there in those quarters were both as a result of significant one-day events, the most recent of which was a group of individuals, youths, as a matter of fact, out of San Francisco, who burglarized approximately 33 cars in one day. And if you'll remember... And if you'll remember, it was quite an event in the city. They were actually apprehended running across Green Hills Country Club. So our deputies apologized to the greenskeeper for the patrol car on the, on the golf course, but they were actually taken into custody by our deputies. So nice patrol work. And then motor vehicle theft, we'll get to, is down. Shoplifting is an issue in the city, as we know. Organized retail theft is an issue, not just for us, but throughout the region and the state. We are encouraged, though, with the passing of Prop 36 that we believe will give us some teeth to have some added enforcement and perhaps add additional penalties for those offenders. And then arson, pretty negligible, and vandalism, pretty flat. Next slide, please. Domestic violence is always an issue in town. As you can see, it was flat from one year to the next with 27 cases. Our clearance slightly down. Next slide, please. Vandalism is down from 22, 23 to 23, 24, and clearance is slightly up. It is a Group A crime, and it affects our overall clearance rates of our reporting. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, motor vehicle theft, this has been a topic of conversation amongst our bureau and something we've really taken an effort to curtail, including operations with the Vehicle Theft Task Force, bait cars, additional patrols, et cetera. I believe that through those efforts, those have helped as we've seen a 22% decrease from last year to this year. Next slide, please. Auto burglary, another issue that's not isolated to the city of Millbury. It's also an issue throughout the region and the state. We have dedicated some efforts to decreasing this, not only in the El Camino corridor but on the Broadway corridor as well with changing up some patrol times, trying to be a little less predictable as it comes to our patrol. And we've seen a 14% decrease from year to year. So that's, that's worth noting. I think this is one of the stats we're most happy with year to year, the 32% decrease in residential burglaries. Residential burglaries, I've been a victim myself. It's one of the most invasive crimes, so we really take steps, especially as it relates to the hills. That's where we focus the bulk of our, our attention. That's where the bulk of our burglaries have been. There's the hills near 280, but our increased patrols have led to a 32% decrease in residential burglary. So definitely a wide range of decrease. So that's nice. Next slide, please. One area we did see an increase last year was aggravated assaults. We saw a 34% increase. Some of this can be attributed to our new reporting system where we count victims now instead of just crimes. In the past, one report could have had a couple different victims. We've seen a couple different instances that have affected this with our unhoused community in Safeway or 7-Eleven where they're, they'll be under the influence or there'll be some sort of theft where multiple people are assaulted. So that's part of the reason for the increase. Next slide, please. So a little bit about our technology deployment. And this is an investment the sheriff has taken a lot of great pride in, and I know the city has invested quite a bit in as well. Currently, we have 26 body worn cameras in our bureau on our officers and our deputies and sergeants. We have two electric signboard trailers, two mobile license plate readers, or flock cameras, if you will. 17 in-car and dash cameras, 23 fixed ALPRs. Those are the flocks we see around town and up in the hills. And then one of the items we're really excited about moving forward that are actually be rolled out here soon are Star Chase platform. So the Star Chase is apparatus that is affixed to the patrol cars where if we have an offender vehicle, the apparatus will actually fire a projectile that will stick to the offender vehicle, and that way we can track it. So it avoids some dangerous pursuits. Offenders know what our pursuits policy are, and they know that they only have to take a couple severe actions before we have to cancel our pursuits, whether it's driving the wrong way on El Camino or 101 or 280 or driving at high rate of speed on a shoulder. They know when we have to cancel. So having the ability to fix an apparatus to the back of their vehicle and track them mobily to wherever they land and then make the arrest there will be a huge step for us moving forward and increase public safety, but also our ability to get those people in custody. So we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. Moving on to a little bit of traffic data. Last year, cumulatively, we wrote 300, or excuse me, 3,672 moving violation citations. That just counts the moving violation, the citations. It doesn't account the warnings. We generally, for every citation issued, we'll, we'll issue a warning as well to a different vehicle. Education is a huge part of increasing traffic safety, and as we all know, that traffic safety is always an issue here in Millbury. And then we wrote over 4,000 parking violations in town. Next slide, please. Traffic collision data. It should be noted that injury accidents are down, though non-injury are up, and we continue to have no fatal accidents, knock on wood. One statistic note is that auto versus pedestrian accidents have gone up slightly, and the primary collision factor generally is stop sign violations here in town. We all know that stop signs are an issue. We've taken steps to address this. We have saturation, traffic enforcement programs here in town where we'll have motors from around the county come here and saturate and really focus on, on one issue for a day. We'll also do what we call mini-step programs where we'll have just sheriff's motors up to six at a time coming to town and focus on those issues. So an added resource for the city from the sheriff's office. I'm also in talks with the city manager on a pilot program to bring an additional motor to the city of Millbury dedicated on an overtime basis. So that's in the works. And then finally, as some of you may have heard, the daylighting law will help with this as well, AB 413. And that's going to reduce the proximity that cars can park to an intersection, to a crosswalk. So that should help with pedestrian safety as well with visibility, et cetera. Next slide, please. Here's just a deeper dive into our traffic data thanks to the Office of Traffic Safety. Traffic crashes are down, persons injured slightly down, no pedestrians killed, thank goodness, pedestrians hit slightly up, some bicyclist injuries, and then some DUI crashes and some hit-and-run crashes. As I mentioned, the enforcement actions were taken and some of the steps were taken to decrease some of these crashes and increase pedestrian safety are noted there below. Next slide, please. So we use data-driven enforcement when it comes to traffic safety. As you can imagine, El Camino corridors, the vast majority of our issues, whether it be speed, running red lights, our crashes. So these were, is where we wrote citations last year. Next slide, please. As you can see, it pretty much directly reflects the issues we've had. These are crash data from, from the year before that basically show that El Camino is an issue. So we direct quite a bit of enforcement and attention there. Next slide, please. Another resource available to the city is PERT, Sheriff's Psychiatric Emergency Response Team. They're based out of San Carlos, and they're comprised of two deputies and two clinicians. Last year, we had 86 referrals for the city of Millbury. The vast majority of those were 51-50 psychholds, but it is a tremendous resource and follow-up these individuals do for, for our residents and for their loved ones. Next slide, please. We're blessed in the city to have a tremendous amount of community engagement, whether it's downtown festivals or civic groups. The sheriff's office tries to be a part of all of these, and we're very fortunate, we feel very fortunate, I can speak for my deputies and sergeants, that we feel welcome to these events, and we feel very fortunate to be asked to be a part of them because not every law enforcement experience is like that. So quite a bit of community engagement here in the city. Everything from Lunar New Year, which we just had, Millbury Art and Wine obviously is a big one, tree lighting. We just were invited to the Self Help for the Elderly Lunar New Year Dinner, which, or Luncheon, which was fantastic, but quite a bit of community engagement. Next slide, please. The sheriff's office has a great deal of initiatives that provide safety and security for the county and added benefits. These are just a few of them, but Star Camp is a tremendous program for youth, underprivileged youth. Over the summer, we've done women's boot camp where we're trying to actively recruit women in the sheriff's office to get to our Sheriff's 30 for 30 pledge. That means 30% female by 2030. So Women's Boot Camp helps women prepare for some of the rigors of the police academy and the job. Project Guardian, where if you have a relative with developmental disabilities, you can register your family and your address under Project Guardian. So we know that when we respond to that address, there may be special concerns to take note of prior to responding. Or if, for instance, you have a loved one with dementia that walk away from the house, we know what their triggers are or what's the issue, so we can more safely interact with them when we do find them. So just a ton of tremendous programs, just to, just to name a few. So next slide, please. As I mentioned, community events. The top right photo is from our bike rodeo last year. Tremendous partnership with the California Highway Patrol where we passed out approximately 200 helmets to youth right before summer to help them safely navigate their bicycling over the summer. We're looking forward to another fantastic event this spring. That's being planned now. Next slide, please. More photos. That's our, one of our therapy dogs, Teddy, on the top left, who is assigned to Deputy Hagic and one of our school resource officers assigned to the city of Millbury. Fantastic resource, therapy dog, not only in the schools, but also helping, helping crime victims navigate their, their emotions following those events. Next slide, please. More photos. The top left is our SWAT truck out at the Millbury Library Touch a Truck event. They had a storytime where they focused on trucks and then had a bunch of resources outside. The SWAT truck, garbage trucks, public works trucks. Really cool day for the kids. And there's my kids making a guest appearance in the slideshow. Next slide, please. Just more photos from our community events. As I mentioned, we're extremely blessed here to be, to be a part of this community and to share in all these. So next slide. So for the public, these are some ways to connect with the sheriff's office through our social medias. There's Nextdoor, Instagram and Facebook. SMCSheriff.com is also a tremendous resource, a ton of information and how-tos, their ways to connect with the sheriff's office. So I'd encourage folks to check that out. Next slide, please. Elaine, did we have a couple other slides? Sorry.
I could double check, but this is the one I thought I, the most recent one.
Okay, sorry. I thought there was an updated one. I'll just encourage, we have a swearing-in ceremony on Monday, the 3rd. It is down at the Sheriff's Regional Operations Center in Redwood City, I believe, 3 o'clock. And we'll be swearing in approximately 15 new deputies and correctional officers. I would encourage the public, as well as our local electeds, to attend these. They're open to the public, but it's really a fantastic opportunity to see the diversity of the backgrounds of the people that we're hiring. I'm always amazed by the quality of individual that comes to work for the sheriff's office, not only their education but their experience. And Monday will be no different. So I'd encourage folks to come, come out for that if they can.
Do we have more?
Give one second, Mayor, and I apologize.
No worries. Take your time.
Is it this one?
It is, yeah. There you go. So as I mentioned, my apologies, it's at 2:30 on Monday, February 3rd, down in the Regional Operations Center. We have three laterals. Next slide, please. We have numerous deputy sheriff trainees, correctional officers. Next slide, as well as civilian staff. And then our final slide, one of the things we're really excited, we're going to embarrass him here because he's actually in the audience, but Deputy Ronnie Azar will actually be receiving the Medal of Life saving for actions he took following a really tragic incident last year involving a 13-year-old on an e-bike who was critically injured. Were it not for Deputy Azar's actions immediately in the aftermath of that accident, it's very possible that that 13-year-old would have, would have passed away on scene there. So just fantastic job by Ronnie, and he'll be awarded that medal on the afternoon. So I'm done embarrassing Ronnie for now. In closing, I'd just like to bring attention to a couple items. I'm extremely optimistic for the coming year here in the city of Millbury as, as it relates to law enforcement. As I mentioned before, new legislation allows us to tamp down on organized retail theft, enhancing public safety via Prop 36 and AB 413 respectively. Some of the conversations we had about future planned investments and resources, not only personnel but tools as well, will allow us to deliver more services and deliver them more efficiently. As I mentioned before, I think it's worth noting that the Millbury Police Bureau is one of the most sought-after assignments in the office due to the amount of support that we enjoy from the community, from our electeds, from our community partners, which means that some of the most talented individuals in the office come to work here, many of whom, as I mentioned, are here tonight. This past year, we've had numerous Millbury deputies recognized countywide for life-saving proactivity and overall service to the community. The men and women of the Millbury Police Bureau provide the best service in San Mateo County, and I can honestly say that I'm proud to work with each and every one of them. So thank you very much for your time, and without, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Chief. I'll first let the council to have comments and questions for our, our chief here. Councilmember Ronald D.
Quick question here, Chief Allen. In regards to the traffic accidents and the data that we saw today, do we have any statistics from the sheriff's department regarding e-bike-related traffic accidents? I know you had mentioned Deputy Sheriff Azar's incident from last year, but is there any specific hard numbers around that? What percentage of traffic accidents?
Off the top, sorry, off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to tell you an exact answer, but I'm, I'd be happy to get that to you. I know the vast majority are remain vehicle accidents. We have had some significant, and as you can imagine, e-bikes, without the protection, they have the potential for more danger and more, more liability, more injury. But the vast majority that we still remain auto vehicle, or excuse me, vehicle accidents. But I'll get you those numbers.
Councilmember Nguyen.
There was a slide, I forgot what page, where violent crimes went down. I just wanted to get your potential insights on why do you think that is?
I believe violent crimes are slightly up.
Oh, sorry. I meant the other, there was motor.
Property crimes?
Yeah, yeah.
So as I mentioned, we've had a couple directives related to specific crimes, whether it's auto theft, whether it's retail theft, vehicle burglaries, where we've really changed some of our methods to direct enforcement and patrol related to those. So I'm certain that those are having an effect. We'll continue to do those.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Just a brief comment. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all of the community engagement that you do and for being a part of all of our festivals and activities here in Millbury, keeping that bike rodeo going, which I think former Councilmember Schneider had originally proposed several years ago. And please keep us in the loop about what requests you have in terms of, you know, as we formulate the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, what resources you need, because we certainly would want to help and make sure that we have as effective, efficient as a department bureau here as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Riley.
Thank you so much for Chief Allen, the comprehensive report. We really appreciate all of the sheriff's work, day and nights, put the life on the line to protect us as Millbury 30 years' residents. We really thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very well. Do we have any public comment on this item? City Clerk.
There are no speakers left, but let me check if there's any hands raised. There's no hands raised on this item.
All right. So that ends public comment on this item. I just wanted to thank the entire Police Bureau from the sheriff's office, you know, coming to work every day. coming to work every day and to serve and protect. I know it's not easy, it's, you know, it's a difficult job, but you all did it so well. And just as you said a moment ago, Chief, this is one of the most sought-after assignment within the Sheriff's Office and we're thankful for that. And, you know, the community is very appreciative of you and will be supportive of you, just as you have supported all of us throughout the decades and the years. Thank you so very much for your dedicated service.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Chief. With that, that brings us to the next item, and Millbrae Cultural Committee donation to the Millbrae Recreation Senior Program. And we have representative from the Millbrae Cultural Committee Board of Director, the Secretary, John Muniz.
Thank you, Mayor Feng, thank you. And I want to thank everyone in Millbrae for coming out last Saturday for the Millbrae Lunar New Year celebration. We brought 20,000 people out to Millbrae.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to have Hannah Moran to come up here and receive these?
Yes, we'd like to have Director, Director Moran to come up and to represent the city.
You can't leave me up here alone. First of all, we have a check for $4,000 to supplement the Millbrae Senior Lunch Program.
All right.
Also, also from the Millbrae Cultural Committee, we have a check for $3,000 for the 2025 Senior Scholarship Program.
All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Hannah, and thank you to the city of Millbrae, and thank you, Millbrae Sheriff's Department.
Thank you all. And what's amazing, he actually brought the real check instead of the big one for the photo. So that's, that's particularly wonderful because you can actually take it to the bank with it. All right, thank you so much, John, and thank you MCC for all you do and the generous donation and the support of the community in the only the senior program, the recreational department. And also, most importantly, not only, certainly the donation is highly appreciated, but the fact that, you know, all of you, the board members and the entire MCC, show up to the senior lunches to actually serve the lunch, to actually volunteer, to do the work. I think that counts a lot more because you're actually being there and then serving everyone who has served the city in the past. So I wanted to, on behalf of the entire city, how thankful we are and how grateful we are to have all of you. Thank you all. Anyone else have any comment for MCC? All right, thank you so much, John.
Mayor, would you have a hand?
Oh, we have a hand raise for this item? Sure, please go ahead.
Sir, please go ahead and accept the mute and please let us know if you're trying to speak on this item, which is Millbrae Cultural Committee donation to the Millbrae Recreation Senior Program.
Hello?
Hi. Hello?
Yes, go ahead, we can hear you.
I'd like to just express my support for the Sheriff, please. And I wanted to-
Hold on one second, sir. This is not the item on the agenda. Right now, we're discussing Millbrae Cultural Committee donation to the Millbrae Recreation Senior Program. If you need to discuss an item that is further in the agenda, there'll be an opportunity for that.
Okay, he unraised his hand.
Okay, thank you very much. I suppose there's no more hand raise or speaker slip?
There's no hands raised or speaker slip on this item.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so next item, which is the Hip Housing Community Calendar Contest Presentation. Mr. City Manager? We have on virtual David Barrera from Human Investment Project and Housing Fund Development and Marketing Associates, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Please help me unmute this presenter? Thank you for joining us, David.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Barrera and I am proud to be the Fund Development and Marketing Associate at Hip Housing, and I'm here tonight to share something fun. Since 1972, Hip Housing has been helping low-income San Mateo County residents to find and maintain affordable housing, and we're listed in all 21 housing elements in San Mateo County, including yours, as a trusted affordable housing partner. Now, last year, we worked with over 3,900 individuals and provided housing to over 1,200 low-income households throughout the county. In Millbrae, during the 2023-2024 fiscal year, we served 73 residents through our properties and programs. That included 24 individuals who applied to our home sharing program. We also had four families enrolled in our self-sufficiency program, and we had one individual through our new housing readiness program. So on behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the Millbrae City Council for your enduring support of our organization. And as a symbol for our appreciation of your partnership, I'm here tonight to present you with Hip Housing's 2025 calendar, which we dropped off earlier in the day. So all council members should get a copy of the calendar. The cover is featured in the slide that you see. Now, this is the fun part. Each year, Hip Housing asks children from around the county in grades kindergarten through fifth to draw a picture of a home and then to tell us what home means to them. This year, we had over 500 calendar entries, and from these entries, we selected 13 winners. So there were 12 for each of the months of the year and then one for the front cover. And my favorite month this year was actually in April. Alyssa, who's a fourth grader from Foster City, she actually said about home that it's a special place where she feels safe and happy with big trees, green grass and a bright blue sky. It makes me want to help take care of the earth so everyone can have a clean and healthy place to live. So we hope you enjoy the calendar and that it serves as a beautiful reminder throughout the year of how important housing is to everyone in our county, especially our children. You can find out more information about Hip Housing's programs and our calendar contest on our website at www.hiphousing.org. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daniel. Anyone from this council? Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just wanted to bring about, thank you, Mr. Barrera, for the update and, you know, the, you know, the calendar is absolutely beautiful. And please do come back and give us more update as the year goes by, and we'd love to support more of your organization.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And moving on to the next item on the agenda, item number two, which is the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide us with a City Manager update and also a report out on January 14, 2025? Close session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. As was mentioned, this evening starts Lunar New Year, so I just would like to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year, actually tomorrow. I want to take the moment and wish everyone good health and lasting prosperity. And also, Gunhei Fatchoy.
Perfect.
And Mr. Mayor, I know that is Cantonese, which is common. I'm gonna try the Mandarin for the first time. Xinian kuallu.
Perfect.
Thank you. Now, my wife is watching what she usually does, I apologize for my diction, but happy Lunar New Year.
I cannot look for any other word to describe it other than perfect.
Practice, practice, practice.
Here we go.
All right, so as also was mentioned, Lunar New Year Festival this past weekend hosted with our partner, Millbrae Cultural Committee, which is a local nonprofit here in the city of Millbrae. It was a fantastic event with thousands of people in attendance both days. I would like to commend our Public Works Department and teams, certainly Bureau Chief Aiman Allen and all of his staff and deputies that were out, Hannah Moran and her staff in recreation, and it's just a great team effort for just a wonderful weekend. So really appreciate all the crews and the events and our partnership with Millbrae Cultural Committee and everyone on their team to volunteer for a wonderful weekend. Bingo night, we started Bingo night once a month, a couple of months ago, at our Recreation Department. So that was last Friday night, and it was a huge hit. We had over 110 people attend. And so anyone that's interested to come out and play bingo, it's once a month, you can find it on our website under our Recreation Department, and it's just getting more and more popular. So upcoming events that we have Friday, February 7th at 6:00 PM is the Rotary Millbrae Lunar New Year Banquet. So you can please join the Rotary and community members on February 7th for the 18th Annual Lunar New Year Banquet. Information can be found on their website, which is www.clubrunner.ca/milbrae. Also, Saturday, February 8th at 11:00 AM, we have our Marina Vista Park Grand Reopening. Again, will be held Saturday, February 8th at 11:00 AM. It's a great celebration of the redesign and overhaul of the Marina Vista Park. We have volunteers that will be serving hot dogs, complimentary ice cream, while exploring the new park and connecting with the community in the neighborhood in Marina Vista. So I think everyone will be very excited with the outcome of the park. Also, Friday, February 14th, we are going back to the movies. The city of Millbrae is hosting Movie Night, it's featuring the movie Inside Out. The great thing about this is February 14th is Valentine's Day, so the Recreation Department, so attention to all the parents out there, they can drop their kids off between the ages of five and 11 for Parents' Night Out. So it's movie night, but also we will have additional staff and parents can drop their children from five to 11 and go celebrate February 14th and Valentine's Day themselves and they'll be in good hands with our Millbrae Recreation staff. So that's Friday, February 14th, over at the Millbrae Recreation Center, starting at, as I mentioned, 6:30 PM. And then I believe, Mr. Mayor, that is an update of the events. There is no reportable action coming from the closed session of January 14th.
Thank you so much for the update. Anyone have any comment for City Managers? Seeing none. Moving on to the approval of meeting minutes, and there's a regular meeting minutes of October 8th, 2024, closed session meeting minutes, October 22nd, 2024. There's a regular meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2024. Also, the closed session meeting minutes of November 12th, 2024, regular meeting minutes of November 12th and November 26th of 2024. Entertain a motion unless there's any comments or discussions.
Motion to approve?
We got a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi?
Second.
We have a second from Vice Mayor Ruben Hollibur. No further comments, if I can get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
The six sets of meeting minutes are approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. And tonight, I don't believe we have any oral report from City Committees and Commission's Chair, and that moves us on to public communication, and this portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the City Council. Every speaker will have three minutes, the speaker is also to address directly to the entire council and not individual council members nor the public. I don't believe I have any speaker slips on this item. City Clerk, do you have any?
That's correct, Mayor. There's no speaker slip on this item, I mean, for public communication, also there's no hands raised online.
Okay, so seeing none, we, that would be the conclusion of public communication this evening. Moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five, receive file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending December 31st, 2024. And we have item six, adoption of a resolution to rename the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee to Economic Development Advisory Committee. And item seven, adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager or his designated to increase budget authority limits for critical public work surface contract. Is there anyone who want to pull any item on this agenda? Seeing none? Any public comment on these three items?
There are no hand raised and no speaker slip.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion if anybody would like to make one.
Move approval?
Move approval from Vice Mayor?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
This consent calendar passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. And public hearing, I don't believe we have any item in public hearing tonight. We don't have any existing business either. So moving on to the new business, which is item number eight, consideration of adopting a resolution stating the City Council's position of no confidence in Sheriff Christina Corpus and calling on the Sheriff's Corpus to resign. I just wanted to bring about this item here as we move forward. Throughout the last few weeks, I've had the privilege of meeting many men and the women's of the Sheriff's Office in the uniform, as well as civilian employees. And throughout these conversations, I got to understand a bit more firsthand information on some of the challenges that we're now seeing at the executive team at the Sheriff's Office. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to the chief and all the captains that I've spoken to and also all the folks that I have spoken to throughout the last few weeks. And all the deputies and all the personnel still continue to work hard, you know, to serve and to protect our residents every day. I'm thankful that the service delivery has not yet been impacted, and, but this is largely due to the fact that our command team has committed to make things work despite some of the lack of communications at the executive level and the directions from the sheriffs and some of the challenges that we're seeing that is being now unfold in public eye. So I just wanted to bring about this discussion and I also wanted to make sure everybody understands that, you know, this item is on the agenda tonight, not because it has to do with somebody investigation being done at the county nor the county itself or any other former council member requesting it, but rather it's because of the men and women who are in uniform every day that we have spoken to, and they also have reached out to many of the members on the City Council expressing something similar. And I just want to bring about this discussion because, as I said a moment ago, you just want to protect all of us in our city, you have supported us throughout these years, and it's also time for us to support you as well. So that's the basis at which I bring about this conversation, and I'd like to hear what the council has to say, and otherwise, we could open to public comment for a discussion. Councilmember Rinaldi?
I would motion to open up to public comment on this agenda item.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else want to make any comments before the public comments?
I would just like to say thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. This is something that Councilmember Rinaldi and I had requested back in December. I believe Councilmember Papin had requested it before she stepped down from the council previously. So thank you for putting it on the agenda and look forward to hearing from members of the public.
Thank you for the comment. So, all right, being that as a mayor, we'll start with public comment. The first speaker on this item is Vanessa Tapia.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Lemos Tapia and I'm here to speak regarding the proposed vote of no confidence against Sheriff Christina Corpus. Our community is at a crossroads and we deserve leadership that inspires trust and unity, not division and doubt. The investigation led by retired Judge LaDoris Cordell highlighted serious issues of retaliation, abuse of power and conflicts of interest within the Sheriff's Corpus administration. These findings have caused significant concern amongst residents and leaders alike, and it's clear that our community's best interests are not being served. While accommodations in, like the one that my father Deputy Sheriff Carlos Tapia received from Mayor Feng last December are a thoughtful way to recognize hard work, they are not enough. What our community needs is action. Supporting this vote of no confidence would set a strong message to our deputies, staff and residents that this council is committed to accountability, ensuring our Sheriff's Office operates with the highest standards of integrity. Our deputies work tirelessly to protect and serve Millbrae, often under challenging circumstances. They deserve leadership that empowers them to do their jobs effectively and without the distractions of scandal or controversy. But more importantly, our residents deserve a community where trust in law enforcement is strong, leadership is accountable and where unity is prioritized over personal agendas. Supporting this resolution is just not about addressing leadership failure, it's about showing that this council is willing to stand up for what's right for Millbrae. Our communities, our deputies and our shared future depend on it. I urge you to support the vote of no confidence and by doing so- I urge you to support the vote of no confidence, and by doing so, demonstrate your commitment to the well-being of our community and the integrity of those who serve it. Thank you for your time and your dedication to Millbury.
Thank you, Ms. Tapia. Next speaker is Jeff Steinberg, followed by Ms. Julie Lynn.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share. I want to start by honoring our heroes here tonight. That is the people in law enforcement, who I've personally had the chance to work with the sheriff's office in law enforcement on multiple occasions, and frankly, I just need to say it, they are the real heroes here tonight, and they need to be honored, and I thank them for their work and their service. That being said, I'm here to speak and support a Sheriff Corpus. I know her and my capacity of doing equity, social justice, and civil rights work. I've been with her, I've talked to her deeply, I understand her belief in equity and diversity and belief in social justice, and in that vein, she's always been righteous and dedicated to the mission of civil rights, in my opinion. I'm sharing the Sheriff Corpus that I know. It seems to me the play of the day is guilty before proven innocent, and that seems to be the theme. And as I said two weeks ago, a decision is made when all the evidence is heard, and I'm not sure all the evidence is out yet. So to hear all the evidence before this council makes a decision, whichever way it goes, I think is prudent. As an elected woman Latina as Sheriff Corpuses, how many of you on the council have spoken with her? I know we've spoken to many of the wonderful deputies and sheriffs here, but how many have spoken to Sheriff Corpus? I would challenge you to reach out and speak with her, after you've spoken with many other people, because I think it needs to be, to quote, "a fair and balanced issue." I know where the sentiments lie tonight here. I know where the sentiments are, but I want to share with you one of my favorite Dr. King quotes. Dr. King said, "A coward will ask the question is it popular? A person with a conscience will ask the question is it right? And there comes a time in one's life where they must do what is neither political nor popular, they must do it because conscience tells them it is right." Ask you to use your conscience, wait till all the evidence comes out, and make the decision you feel is best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Next speaker, Julie Lynn, followed by Elliot Storch.
Alrighty. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Julie Lynn, and on behalf of the 102 affiliated unions and over 95,000 members and their families represented by the San Mateo Labor Council, I recommend your adoption of this resolution so that Millbury can join the city of San Carlos, county, federal, state, and local elected officials, community leaders, labor, the Democratic Party, and the working people at every level of the sheriff's office, informally expressing no confidence in Sheriff Corpus's leadership and calling upon her to resign. You have and will continue to hear from members of our sheriff's office tonight, but there are others who would love to come tell their stories, but they can't because they're scared. Because as mentioned in the independent investigative report initiated by the county in response to the myriad employee complaints filed, that lies, secrecy, intimidation, retaliation, conflicts of interest, and abuses of authority are the hallmarks of the Corpus administration. There's also an overwhelming lack of demonstrated accountability, as none of the sustained allegations in the report have been addressed by the sheriff, other than to deny responsibility for them. Operationally, she's working on a third executive team in only two years, with the vital positions of Assistant Sheriff of Corrections and Assistant Sheriff of Operations unfilled with no prospect of being filled, given the state of the department. Higher numbers are highlighted, but the fact that there are openings due to over 100 staff members having fled the organization with more planning to leave is overlooked. She further refuses to address the unlawful and intentional arrest of Deputy Sheriff's Association President Carlos Tapia on the eve of Judge Cordell's report being released. Despite the district attorney refusing to file any charges and stating no crime occurred, she continues to pursue an Internal Affairs investigation against Deputy Tapia, and he remains on administrative leave. The dedicated employees of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office serve as vital partners in protecting our community. They respond to emergencies, prevent crime, and ensure public safety across our neighborhoods and across city lines. They don't just work here, they live here. They're raising their families here, just like we are. Their commitment to our community is unwavering, and we rely on their expertise and courage every day. Investing in their protection and well-being is not only the right thing to do, it's necessary for maintaining the safety and security of our city. Just as we want Millbury to be safe, we should want the people that protect it to be safe at work. The sheriff's administration is beyond repair. There's no riding this ship while she remains as captain. No one is above the law, and public officials must uphold the highest standards of integrity and accountability. Our community, our county, and the employees of the sheriff's office deserve a lot better than this. Once again, please support this resolution, show your Millbury Public Safety Team that you're invested in them, just like they are in our city, and be sure to support County wide Measure A, as ballots begin dropping next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. We have Elliot Storch, followed by Ken Smith.
Good evening. My name is Elliot Storch. I'm a detective with the sheriff's office and the secretary of the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and also a very proud former Millbury deputy from 2018 through 2020. Sheriff Corpus's many misdeeds are well-known at this point. She has used racist and homophobic language, she's elevated her alleged romantic partner to high positions within the agency, and she engaged in what we believe to be a criminal conspiracy to unlawfully arrest DSA President Carlos Tapia. She is very clearly unfit to continue as sheriff. Sheriff Corpus will say that all of this is a political hit job because of her race and gender. This is a lie. She'll say that it's a small group of entrenched resistors who are saying all these things. This is also a lie. She'll say that it's a budget disagreement. This is a lie. She will take credit for the crime stats that Chief Allen just presented, while she is not out here doing a single bit of work to help make this community safer. It is entirely the deputies who work here. The DSA states everything that she has done, everything that is going on right now, is solely because of Sheriff Corpus's immoral decisions and abusive behavior. The DSA urges that the city council approve a no-confidence vote in Sheriff Corpus for all of those reasons, but also because a vote of no confidence in Sheriff Corpus is a vote of confidence in the deputies who work here. The deputies do such a great job serving this city, and they deserve a sheriff that they can trust, and they also deserve your support. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Storch. We have Ken Smith, followed by Gina Pappin.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be up here with you. Today, I wanted to show my support for the resolution letter of no confidence for Christina Corpus. It's a very tough decision for me because I do have issues with proposition Measure A versus a recall. I believe that a recall is the proper way, but I don't know and I don't understand what's happening in the executive management team, Sheriff's Department. I don't think any of us really have a clear understanding, but what I do know is this: I want to show my support for the men and women, the Sheriff's Department, that protects Millbury every single day. It's super important to all of us and all the neighbors that I speak to. They all feel the same way I do. We, as a morning dog walker, I've been seeing huge improvements with the sheriffs and with the unhoused and just the safety in our neighborhoods that we walk, we have a walking neighborhood, and it's so important that you feel safe in it. I think I got everything sorted and sweet, right? But yeah, again, I don't know what's in the management team and the executive team, what's going on, so I really can't speak to that, but what I can speak to is that the sheriffs in Millbury, the town I live in, we live in, the sheriffs are doing a great job. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and we have Gina Pappin.
Good evening. My name is Gina Pappin. I've served four terms on the Millbury City Council and three times as the mayor. Mayor Fung is incorrect. Each one of these council members can make a request to have an item on the agenda. They do not need to wait for the mayor's independent evaluation. I made the request for this resolution last year, and it was delayed and blocked by the mayor, but it is good to thank you to Vice Mayor Holliber and Councilmember Rinaldi for bringing this forward, recognizing the significance and importance of this resolution. Speaking against this is really to ignore the facts. The facts are lies, secrecy, intimidation, retaliation against conflicts of interest, abuses of authority, again, the hallmarks of the Corpus administration. If this council does not take a vote of no confidence, they are not only condoning the sheriff's racist and homophobic comments made during her tenure here, but they are sweeping it under the rug, which should never, ever happen. The independent report by a respected judge concluded the only way forward is a change in leadership. That's what this council needs to reiterate and send a message to the public. Over 40 witnesses took part in the investigation, and Sheriff Corpus has had every opportunity to participate, but she has chosen not to. Just making comments in the public denials do not disregard the findings from over 40 witnesses who had the will, respect, and strength to stand up and speak the truth to the judge. Remember, over 100 deputies have already resigned. No need for more to do so. You believe in public safety? If you say that, you should and you must support the vote of no confidence for Sheriff, for this sheriff, and call for her resignation. No one who works for the Sheriff's Department, many of whom are here tonight, should be forced to work under the conditions established by Sheriff Corpus's administration. Each one of you should have a name on this resolution, standing up for the people who will put their lives on the line, who have done a great job, as you heard tonight, but we need to support them publicly. I hope you support this. If you believe in public safety, you will.
Next speaker, Dan Stiching.
Thank you for hearing me tonight, council members. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone from the DSA who's here. I read your report earlier today, and this is a safe city. DSA does a great job, and all these guys should be proud. I live in AD 23, Assembly District 23 over in Pacifica. In Assembly District 23, my Chinese mother-in-law had four neighbors within 250 feet murdered within a six-month period. Not everywhere in San Mateo County, not everywhere in AD 23 is safe. Just isn't. Zero murders in 2024. That's what you had last year in San Mateo County. Zero murders. An awful lot of the report that went through, maybe 90% of it, is changes in policy versus the law, policy or procedure. Sheriff can change policy by snapping his or her fingers, period. I disagree with former Councilmember Pappin on her interpretation of Fung's statement. I believe Fung's statement is correct. This is a power grab by the county, period. This has a lot to do with Ray Mueller's campaign for district attorney to replace Steve Wagstaff. Plain and simple, this is a power grab, and at 9:00 AM tomorrow, there's a very good chance this is going to get yanked off the ballot completely. Again, thank you to the DSA, but thank you to Sheriff Corpus, because this is the safest county in California, and it's because of the good men and women of the Sheriff's Department. It is. It's the DSA, but it is the sheriff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stiching, and I believe that's all the in-chamber speaker. City Clerk, would you please call those who are hand-raised online?
Okay, the first online speaker is Ron. Please accept the mute. Ron Collins.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Mayor Fung, Vice Mayor Holliber, and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Ron Collins. I recently retired from the San Carlos City Council after 13 years of service, during which I had the honor of serving twice as mayor. At our November 25th council meeting, we voted unanimously in favor of the same resolution before you tonight. As this was my penultimate meeting as a council member, I found no joy in considering this resolution. But like you, we are a client city, and the sheriff's conduct has directly affected us. These past few months have been distressing for many people in our county, the fine deputies who serve our contract cities, the county at large, our chiefs, the administration staff of the sheriff's office, and many others who have endured mistreatment at the hands of the very top of the command chain. As in our city, the allegations of misconduct by Sheriff Corpus have made the jobs of your deputies harder. It cannot be emphasized enough, morale is crucial to any workplace, and law enforcement is no different. These are dedicated men and women who keep us safe every day, often in dangerous positions. They serve our residents and yours, who are also your constituents. When their well-being is compromised, it becomes your responsibility. All of you on that dais know that your primary duty, as it was ours as elected city officials, is to ensure the public safety of your residents. The findings of Judge Cordell's report are serious and undeniable, yet the sheriff continues to refuse to acknowledge her wrongdoings or even offer the slightest sign of contrition. This is not about race, color, or gender. It is about accountability, only accountability. The cost to the taxpayers of San Mateo County are mounting every day she delays stepping down. Every week seems to bring another round of denial, vitriol, and defensiveness on her part. I believe it is time for her to acknowledge the damage being done to our county, damage to public safety, damage to public trust and confidence, as well as to the county's treasure, and resign immediately. Some of you may fear that voting in favor of this resolution will expose your city to litigation. This has not been the case in San Carlos. On the contrary, think about the risk to your constituents if deputies continue to leave and recruitment becomes even more difficult. We could not take that risk in San Carlos, and I urge you not to take it in your city either. Please be courageous and do the right thing by voting unanimously in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next speaker?
Next speaker is James Johnson. Please accept the mute.
Yes, we can hear you great.
Oh, excellent, excellent. So first of all, James Johnson from Redwood City, 40-year resident in San Mateo County. So each one of you guys, I just want to say thank you guys for giving us an opportunity to speak. You guys are extremely professional, and so I just want to thank you guys for that. But to the city council members and residents of Millbury, I just want to address the resolution of no confidence against Sheriff Christina Corpus, and to respectfully urge you to reconsider the claims made in that document, that 402-page document by the judge. Not only was the judge paid $700,000 for that document, but there's a lot of hyperbole and a lot of statements that are being made that really don't have any truth to it. If you read it, like I have roughly about a dozen times, there's so many different inaccuracies within that document. But first and foremost, I want to highlight the discrepancies in the statistics cited to question her performance, and that's Christina Corpus. According to the California Department of Justice, Sheriff Corpus has achieved unprecedented results in addressing staff challenges. Since she's taken office in January 2023, she has successfully hired over 170 new officers, revising a long-term decline in law enforcement staffing across the country. These are all statistics that I've pulled from various resources and sources in the web that come from nonprofits and from the Department of Justice. This is a testament to her ability to cite, retain, and motivate personnel during a time when many departments across the state are facing shortages, budget shortages, and yet Christina Corpus is still doing an amazing job attracting new officers. Additionally, crime rates in San Mateo County have decreased significantly under her tenure. These positive trends in public safety direct contradict claims and ineffective leadership. Sheriff Corpus has implemented innovative mental health and de-escalating programs that have strengthened the relationship between law enforcement and the community. the relationship between law enforcement and the community. The allegations of retaliation and misconduct raised in the resolution are serious, but they lack credible evidence. It is important to recognize that resistance to change is not uncommon when a leader introduces necessary reforms. Sheriff Corpus has challenged the status quo and faced opposition from those unwilling to embrace progress. This should not be mistaken for poor leadership, but rather viewed as a growing pain for a department undergoing meaningful transformation. Removing Sheriff Corpus from office would not only destabilize the department, but also jeopardize ongoing initiatives aimed at improving public safety and addressing critical issues such as mental health intervention. The Sheriff's Office has made significant strides in rebuilding trust and ensuring the safety of our communities, and these efforts must be allowed to continue. I urge the city council to reevaluate Sheriff Corpus' performance based on objective data and measurable outcomes, not only complaints or politically motivated narratives, but also to focus on facts, transparency, and fairness.
Thank you so much for your comment, Mr. Johnson. Thank you so much. I want to be fair to everybody. It's a three-minute time clock. Thank you. All right. City Clerk, would you please do the next speaker?
The next speaker is Los. Please go ahead and state your name for the record. Thank you. Los, L-O-S, please accept the mute and state your name for the record.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Please, you just please let us know your name.
I'm Carl Perout. Good evenings.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Members of the city council, good evening. Deputy Corpus has worked for the Sheriff's Office for over 23 years. Under her, I feel safe and I feel hopeful. She has been convicted by some people unfairly without all the facts. That is not a democracy. She has not been treated fairly, and that is not right. This is a clear witch hunt. Christina Corpus is a good person and a great sheriff. Removing Sheriff Corpus would put the whole county at risk with more crime. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. City Clerk, I think there was one more?
Yes. Al Sanchez, please accept the mute.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to state that I'm going to keep it short and see that I confirm 100% with Mr. Johnson, and I just want to raise my support for Sheriff Christina Corpus. That's it.
Thank you for the comment. Anyone else?
James Johnson already spoke, and he raised his hand again.
Well, everybody gets three minutes, and I want to be fair to everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So without further public comment, that would be the end of public comment on item number eight. Bring it back to the council. Just wanted to bring about something that is of high importance here. I wanted to thank all the speakers on this item, and as passionate as all of you are, and as you might also have heard, council, that this is a highly politically charged issue. And there are people who have special political interest in pushing this agenda since last year. And our resident has also been very outspoken about the need of getting to the facts, because there's always three sides to a story, and I wanted to get to the facts. And I have opportunity to speak to many of you who are in the audience, including those who are not tonight. And I did hear both sides of the story, not just one-sided. So to that end, that's why I believe this is the time to bring about this discussion to this council. And after we get all the facts and after everybody has an opportunity to interview and talk to those who are affected by this and draw your own conclusion, because as I see it, I spoke to not only the rank and files and the men and women in uniform, but also the command staff and former executive team members. So to that end, based on what I'm hearing and the facts that I gather, it warrants this discussion, and therefore I bring this forward. And we want this discussion to be factual and not political, and certainly not allow these political interests to get in the way of this discussion. Therefore, this is the right time and the place for this discussion in support of the men and women who are in the uniform every day, to make it work every day. And the importance of this really stems from how the surface delivery has been as good as they have been despite many of those lack of communications, lack of directions, and challenges at the highest level. But yet, with toothpicks and Band-Aid, we made it work. But my concern is the long-term surface delivery and ensuring that this community, that we continue to be a safe and sound community. And that's why this resolution and this discussion do we brought forward. So I want to be clear as to the intent, because it's not only what we do as a council, but more importantly, it's why we do it, and under what lenses and what light do we conduct this discussion. So with that said, I want to open it up to the council for those who wish to comment and questions. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for all the speakers who spoke this evening about this. You know, I think the Cordell report speaks for itself. I think you can go and try to poke holes in it. I know there were about 40 witnesses, some of whom may be in this room right now. I think there are some facts that are undisputed. First of all, there was an assistant sheriff who had participated, cooperated in the report, and was subsequently fired for that. There was also, the day before the report was released, President Tapia of the Deputy Sheriff's Association was arrested under wrongful pretenses. You know, I'm sure many of us have worked in jobs with low morale or with a poor working environment. I don't think we worked in jobs where we might be arrested for speaking out or have the fear of being fired at any time. So from the discussions that I've had with deputies, with members of the Sheriff's Department, morale is very low. And this is affecting, fortunately, people are going to work today, every day. They're professionals. But over time, this does take a toll on the men and women in uniform who work here at our Millbrae substation and throughout the county. You know, I think the culture of retaliation was very well documented and something that should not be part of a work environment, really, at any level, particularly here in law enforcement in San Mateo County. So based on these discussions that I've had, I do support this resolution going forward, and I think it's time for a change in leadership at the Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Mr. Speaker? Councilmember Rinaldi, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Captain Eamon Allen, staff, the rest of the DSA, thank you for your unwavering commitment to provide Millbrae with the highest quality of service, and your families and loved ones supporting you all throughout these trying times. As a city which contracts with San Mateo County DSA, we have high standards that our community expects and deserves. Behaviors in the 400-page Cordell report, coupled with the wrongful arrest, San Mateo County Deputy Sheriff's Association's President Carlos Tapia do not reflect these standards, especially the alleged use of homophobic texts and racial slurs, which we do not condone here in Millbrae. What this situation boils down to is a leadership issue. There have been significant staffing issues alongside all five captains declaring a vote of no confidence, and the Deputy Sheriff's Association overwhelmingly adopting a no-confidence action as well. While the Sheriff's Office has been able to maintain the staffing levels outlined in our agreement, it's uncertain if this will be sustainable given the continued staffing issues and the turmoil in the Sheriff's Office. I don't think any of us take this public safety delivery nor the well-being of the staff, whom we all consider members of the community and provide excellent service lightly. So as such, I'll be supporting this resolution, but I have two simple requests from my fellow council members. The first is to allow Vice Mayor Hollibur to be allowed the first motion regarding this agenda item, since he brought it forward to this council and has continually championed it. And then the second, currently the only name on this resolution is our mayor's, which I understand is merely ceremonial. However, I believe it's not only symbolic, but essential that all council members who are in favor of this resolution be allowed to show their unity and have their names and signatures added to it. That's all.
Councilmember Riley?
I like many of you choose to stay in Millbrae, because we have sheriffs work so hard to keep ourselves safe. So we support all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Any further comments? Councilmember Wen?
So I heard a lot about politics earlier. I just want to stay away from that. It's mainly about public safety, and that does this affect public safety? And after just going through the Cordell report, I'm just going to kind of go over my notes here on why I think it does affect public safety. One is the erosion of trust and morale. We definitely need that for our police, not police, but Sheriff's Department. They want to make sure that there's no fear of retaliation, and that that can potentially affect their performance. So that's like a big no for me. And then also, lack of accountability. The sheriff did not respond to requests for interview with investigators. So I think that's not a good look, in my opinion. And I feel that there's a disregard for like the potential fallout like in terms of staffing shortages. I've heard that there could be problems with staffing, and if this continues, I think this will definitely affect public safety. So I am in favor of a no-confidence resolution. Thank you.
All right. So thank you for the comment, council member. So you know, based on what I heard, it's particularly important that we bring this discussion here in this light, because I think what we heard, and based on the spirit at which we need to conduct this discussion, I think it's particularly relevant to consider this without being personal about it, right? This resolution is not about me. It is about the men and women in uniform, all those in front of us. I have no problem not having my name on this resolution. In fact, I'll be the last one to sign it. In fact, if I can put all your name on it, I would do that, because this resolution, it's about supporting you. That's why I bring this forward. So I don't have to have my name on it, but I do legally speaking, because I sit in this chair. But I want to emphasize to all of you, this isn't about me, nor any one of us, or any former council member, but it's about you. That's the reason why this resolution is being discussed and is worthy of this discussion, because it shows the support of the City of Millbrae to all of you who come to serve and to protect our people every day. And I want to be absolutely and perfectly clear why this discussion took place this evening. So to that end, I'm more than happy to support this resolution. I also wanted to thank the staff, city attorney and city manager and everybody else who worked hard to get this resolution in the language form that it is tonight, because it's important that as we resolve to this resolution, what we resolve to, and the spirit at which we do so. Because I repeat, it's not only what we do, but the reason why we do it, and under what condition and what spirit at which we cast this vote of no confidence on the sheriff. So with that, I'll take a motion if the vice mayor would like to make one. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just have the request to do it so.
I don't care who makes the motion, but I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, we have a so move from the vice mayor. Anyone else want to make a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rinaldi? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wen?
Hi.
Councilmember Riley?
Hi.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Hi.
Mayor Fung?
In support of all of our men and women in uniform, I say yes. Thank you very much.
All right. The city council adopted a resolution stating the city council's position of no confidence in Sheriff Christina Corpus and calling on the Sheriff Corpus to resign. Passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. Item number nine. Study session of city council to receive information on potential updates to the city's density bonus and inclusionary housing ordinance. City manager, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our planning director, Mr. Andy Mogensen, and his team that has worked hard, has been a long-awaited project. Hita Mosin, our primary consultant on this, has a lot of great information this evening, and just excited to bring this forward to the city council on these two items, as shown in the report. One is the inclusionary housing ordinance. It's a local inclusionary housing that goes above and beyond what the state law requires. And then an analysis, or excuse me, that's a density housing ordinance. Got that backwards. And then the inclusionary housing study. Currently, we're at 15%. There was a request of the city council to go analyze an additional 5% for 20%. We have those findings this evening presented to the council. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Mogensen, the Community Development Director for the opening presentation.
And before you get started, Director, I just want to thank the audience here who stick around and wanted to pay attention to the city and what goes on and care about the city of Millbrae. That's important to all of us, and just by showing up, knowing that who cares about our city. Thank you very much, Mr. Mogensen.
Thank you. The city manager has already done the introductions. I'm joined tonight by Rosco Mata, our housing, or I'm sorry, our planning manager, and Hita Mosesman. I'm going to hand it over to Hita for the presentation tonight from Harrison Associates. And I just want to say that we're very appreciative of the work that their firm has done for us on so many of these topics related to economic development and planning.
And as Hita comes up, anybody watching, do not fall asleep, because there is some great information in here about the markets and feasibility, so.
Excellent.
Get some coffee.
Coffee's in the hallway.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Hita Mosesman. I work for Harrison Associates. We are your consultant, and I'm vice president of the Community Development and Housing Business Unit at Harris. And I'm here this evening, as the city manager, and Andrew had mentioned, to present some findings from two different analyses that we completed on behalf of the city. And next slide, please. So first slide is just an overview of what we'll be covering in the presentation. So first, we're going to look at why we did these two studies. What was the purpose of that exercise? We're going to talk about what density bonus even is and what that means, as well as inclusionary housing, what that is and why it's important. And then we will present the findings of both the density bonus analysis and the inclusionary housing analysis. And next slide? So really, the origins of why the study was completed are really centered in your housing element. So every city and county in the state of California is required to update the housing element of the general plan every eight years. It's also the only element in the general plan that has to be certified or approved by the state of California. The city successfully did certify its six-cycle housing element a little less than two years ago. And that housing element has a series of actions and programs that the city must undertake to encourage more housing development. And two of those programs specifically, HP27, HIP, excuse me, 27, and HIP50, call for updating the city's current density bonus ordinance to encourage small lot consolidation, as well as looking at increasing the city's inclusionary requirement, which I will describe and explain shortly, increasing that from 15% of all housing units as part of market rate development to 20%. Would that be feasible? Would development still occur if that requirement and regulation were to be increased? So that's why we're looking at these studies at this point. And next slide, please? So getting into what density bonus is, it's not really a word, the terms that get used every day. But what density bonus essentially is, is it's an incentive that the state of California enacted several years ago to encourage housing development. And so what it basically says at its core is that if a developer comes in with a market rate project and they set aside a few or a certain percentage of affordable units, they can actually exceed the current maximum density pursuant to a local jurisdiction's zoning. So if there's a lot that in the maximum units per acre, the units on that lot would be 50 units. be 50 units, if a developer came in with some affordable units set aside, they could exceed that 50 unit maximum. So again, it's to incentivize development to allow for additional market rate units that helps these projects be more financially feasible. And again, every city and county in the state of California is subject to this. It's a state mandate. Every jurisdiction in the state must follow. And next slide, please. So secondly, what is inclusionary housing? And really what inclusionary housing is, is a local law in the city's or county zoning code that says that housing development must include a certain percentage of affordable units at certain income categories. Many cities and counties in the state of California have initiated this to try to increase somewhat the supply of affordable housing at various level, income levels to serve the entire community. So the important part of establishing these requirements is to test what we call the financial feasibility, which is to look at how much it costs to develop a project with affordable units and to see if the revenues cover those costs or exceed those costs. If the revenues do exceed the costs, we call that financially feasible, the numbers, they work. So it's important to test that when you do set those requirements, which the city has done each time or back in 2021, when these requirements were first initiated. So the current requirement right now, and you look at it in two different product types, for rental projects, it's 10% very low income, which is 50% of area median income or below, and 5% low income, which is 80% of area median income or below for a household. So a total of 15% of very low and low units would be required, any market rate development that would occur in the city. On the ownership side or for sale, the requirement's 15% at moderate income, which is about closer to average area median income in the county. And next slide. So now I'd like to cover the results of the analysis on the density bonus. And next slide, please. So just by way of background, again, we touched on what the state law says about density bonus. It's it's an incentive for developers that allows them to build more density on lots and properties throughout the state. Developer comes in, has a market rate project and has set aside a certain percentage of units, let's just say 15% very low income units on 100-unit project. The state requires that that developer would be able to exceed the local density limit on that particular property because they came in with the 15% very low income units. And I wanted to mention that density bonus, just to add to the complication, it's a sliding scale. There are many options and menu options developers can choose from. So it's not just one percentage that we're dealing with. They can choose several different income levels and at different percentages. And it gets, the density bonus gets higher, the more deeply affordable the units are in general. So the developer would get extra market rate units, and in this case, 15% very low units on 100-unit project would yield that developer 50, 5-0, additional market rate units. Market rate units generate a profit and they help the financial feasibility of the project and help cover the cost for the affordable units, which are income restricted and less rent or sales price comes in on those units to cover the cost, which is the same per unit, whether it's affordable or whether it's market rate. And next slide, please. So looking at how the state density bonus interacts with your inclusionary housing requirement, we thought that was an important thing to look at. Since you already do require a certain percentage of affordable units, what would developers get if they were to meet your inclusionary housing requirement? How does the state density law kind of interact with that? And basically, at the sliding scales that I've talked about, the state actually does incentivize meeting your very low income housing requirement in your in your zoning code, which is 10%, as I had mentioned, 10% very low income units. The state density bonus allows for almost, I think it's almost 40% at that level, but if you go up to 15%, you get a 50% density bonus, which we see in the market. We see developers using that 15% because you get a lot of market rate units out of that 15% to cover those units, as opposed to if you had just low income units, you'd have to have more of them to achieve that same density bonus. And the same goes for moderate. So that's what we're just sort of seeing out in the market. So again, the state density bonus does provide sort of an incentive for your inclusionary on very low. However, that is not the case with low income units. And we also see this with a number of jurisdictions, that there are very low income units being created in the market, but not as many low because you have to have more of those to get a similar density bonus. So the state density bonus requires at least a 10% minimum percentage to of low income units to grant any type of density bonus. Your inclusionary requirement is 5%. So developer doesn't get any extras meeting your inclusionary requirement at 5% low. They do at very low, but not at low. And I'm kind of setting the stage for the findings of our report here, but just kind of describing how these things interact with each other and how they might incentivize or not incentivize your meeting your inclusionary. With regard to the ownership, there is some incentive. Your ownership projects have a requirement of 15% moderate. And the state density bonus does offer it 10% density bonus for projects that meet that requirement. So less than when you have the very low units is what I'm trying to demonstrate here, is that there's a little bit of incentive for meeting your inclusionary for moderate, quite a bit for very low, but none for low. There is no extra that the state alone would allow you. And next slide, please. So this is why we looked at, in conversations with staff, we looked at what could the city provide that might be above and beyond what the state provides and would interact well with your inclusionary requirement and specifically meeting your low. So the way that that would help this extra city, it's a bonus on top of a bonus, if you could put it that way. There's the state density bonus and the city would provide something on top of that. It would provide for more market rate units, which generates a little bit more profit to cover the cost of providing those affordable units. Also in Millbrae, there are quite a number of smaller lots and consolidating smaller lots into a larger parcel for development is complicated. It can be time consuming and expensive, as well as present some risk. So having those extra market rate units to provide a buffer to be able to do that lot consolidation does provide an incentive for developers as well. And really overall, development is a risky business. You're getting approvals for something that won't open for two to three years potentially. And what the market looks like in two to three years can be projected, but it's not a guarantee. So really, when you're allowing for more market rate, you're buffering that risk for developers who may choose Millbrae to develop in when there's even a bonus on top of the state density bonus that they might receive for developing here and meeting your inclusionary requirements to create more affordable housing. And next slide, please. So rental and for sale product types are different in housing and your requirements for density bonus, or excuse me, for inclusionary are also different. So we wanted to look at them separately because I know this, this is kind of a complicated business. What makes it so complicated is the sliding scale that I've mentioned that's in state law, but we're trying to break it down to sort of bite sized pieces here. So as I said, your existing inclusionary requirement is 10% very low income units and 5% low income units for rental. 15% very low income units would yield in this example, and this is the 100-unit example that I referred to earlier, 100-unit market rate development mostly, 85 market rate, 15 very low income units would yield the developer under just the state 50 additional market rate units, so 50% density bonus. And then there is the requirement for your 5% low inclusionary requirement. If the city offered a density bonus for that, so it would be the bonus on top of the bonus, that would allow the developer 15 more market rate units. So under the existing state density bonus, the same project would get 50 units of market rate additional, but with the state layered with the city, they would get 65 additional market rate. So again, this translates into additional profit, additional buffer for some lot consolidation and additional incentives to develop. And next slide, please. So for ownership, as I said, your inclusionary requirement is 15% moderate. A project that comes in, and we chose a smaller project as an example due to the smaller lot sizes, you have a 10-unit project and a developer comes in, you have a 15% moderate income requirement. Our assumption would be that the developer would get, under the state density bonus, one additional market rate unit. So that's just the state bonus. But if the city allowed for an additional bonus on top of that, so matching the state's density bonus, they would get even one more unit. So the original project at 10 units would actually be 12 and those extra two units for sale would be market rate. They would not be affordable. So again, it allows more revenue coming in on the bottom line for this potential development. And next slide, please. So that is our, just to pause here for a second, I think what we had looked at in our memorandum on the density bonus recommendations was for the city to provide an additional density bonus for the low income units as part of a project when they meet your inclusionary, an extra 15% density bonus. And for the moderate income units on ownership was to match the state's density bonus. So that's really what the recommendations in that memorandum that you have before you are this evening. And with that, I will move on to the inclusionary housing analysis. Thank you. So again, I'm repeating these concepts a number of times because I know there's lots of numbers and tables in this, but here, this table illustrates what your existing requirements are, which again, on ownership, it's only 15% moderate and on rental, it's 10% very low income and plus 5% low income. And next slide, please. So in the process to look at your inclusionary housing, again, there's a program in your housing element that required a look at increasing the 15% to 20%. So the way that we approached this was to first identify some example development projects that one might see in Millbrae moving forward. We looked at some recently approved projects and used those as what we're calling prototypes or example developments that could happen in the future. One of them was ownership and three of them were rental. We then met with local developers. We invited several, I think we met with two, and we obtained input on the increase in the inclusionary. We also disclosed the assumptions that we were using and the data sources and asked for their feedback and their input on that process as well, which we then incorporated into our analysis and study. Then the next step was to calculate development costs using a construction cost index called Marshall and Swift. It's CoreLogic product. And we also estimated the revenues that would come in from for sale units and also rental, also using CoStar and Zillow for median rents and home prices. And then we looked at, do revenues exceed costs and do they exceed it enough to buffer potential market changes two or three years down the line when projects open? So that's how we conducted the financial feasibility to test your inclusionary potential increase to 20%. And next slide, please. So the results for rental, and I won't go through a lot of this detail, but basically the bottom line was it didn't pencil. It was not financially feasible to develop market rate projects even and meeting your inclusionary at the same time at 20%. But we also found that under current market conditions, 15%, which are your existing requirements today, also are not financially feasible. And there are a number of factors that I'll review on a subsequent slide, but they generally have to do with, there's been changes in rents, in interest rates, inflation and the like, and that has impacted the financial feasibility. We did test though to find, you know, solution oriented, at what point would it be financially feasible for all of the prototypes with a decent buffer? And we found that would be 4% very low and 4% low, so a combined total of 8% affordable for rental projects. And next slide. So looking at ownership projects, the results were a little bit different. It still wasn't feasible at raising it to 20%. That did not pencil, but your current inclusionary requirement at 15% is financially feasible with a good buffer. And next slide. I won't go through this table to, you know, any kind of large degree here. It's just summarizing the findings that we found, which was 20% wasn't financially feasible for rental or ownership. The rental existing inclusionary housing requirement is not feasible at 15%, but it is at eight. But your existing inclusionary requirement for ownership is feasible at the 15% level. And next slide, please. So a little bit about the market factors that we believe have made the difference to render the 15% existing inclusionary requirement for rental infeasible. I think it's pretty common knowledge, the interest rates have increased significantly since 2020. That makes the cost of borrowing money more expensive. And so that has impacted the financial feasibility for housing development across the board. Many multifamily projects are stalled, waiting for interest rate changes to go down. Also inflation for construction costs and materials. It's probably pretty widely reported that inflation has been a little crazy the last few years. Affordable units cost the same to develop as market rate units, but the rents and prices that come in have to be restricted specifically to the income levels that I had mentioned earlier. So those rents and prices do not typically cover the cost of building those units. There's also been some volatile and limited rent growth in the last four years, specifically in the city, which we think has contributed to this sort of lack of financial feasibility. You have some small lot sizes. It is time consuming and expensive to consolidate. And with affordable housing in particular, there just isn't enough public funding to cover the needs statewide. So the city, the market factors the city cannot control are interest rates and rents, but what the city can control are requirements and policies and making sure that those are right sized and match current market conditions. And next slide, please. So this is the rent growth that I was referring to. This is according to CoStar, which is a data analytics subscription that investors and developers use. We use it too. And we took some data there and you can see that overall rents have grown about 3% in Millbrae since 2020, but the majority of that growth happened up until 2022. And we've had two years of some modest declines in rent. So this is something that, you know, can affect the feasibility. So this is something that, you know, can affect the feasibility. If rents coming in on a rental project won't support the high construction costs and the higher interest rates, that makes a project less feasible. If rents and prices don't similarly increase with costs, that can create the situation of financial infeasibility. And next slide, please. So median home prices, there had been a dip. Overall, there's been a 10% growth over the last four years. But as you can see, it was 2020 and 2021 where we saw a lot of growth. We had somewhat of a decline in 2022, but it looks like the housing market, for sale housing market, has recovered well. There was a 12% increase in median home prices in Millbrae. And what we found also was, and I think this is the reason for the popularity of rental projects, that a household would have to make more than 200% of the county's current area median income to be able to afford a median priced home in the city. So that's why, you know, communities across most of California are seeing a lot more rental projects. And next slide, please. And this is a chart that just illustrates the increase in interest rates. Since January of 2020, there's been quite a bit of growth there. They're still not really high if you look at a 20 or 30 year average, but they are higher than they were. And again, a lot of this gets based on what rent can be received and what price can be received, and does that cover our costs? So these are, these are the types of decisions that developers make. And so when prices and rents are not increasing at the same rate as costs, that's where we get into feasibility concerns. And next slide, please. So in summary, that was a lot of data. I know, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The recommendations that came out of the analysis were to right size the inclusionary housing study, given how market factors have changed. That's reducing the 15% of rental to eight, where it is penciling very well. Also to update your density bonus ordinance, to offer the additional density bonus on low and moderate income housing units, to provide that bonus on top of a bonus and provide extra incentive, particularly to look at that lot consolidation issue in terms of having a little bit of extra buffer for developers to be able to do that. And also to take a look at your specific plans. I know the city's undertaken a lot of planning activities over the past few years to incentivize development, but looking at those specific plans in light of some of the more recent market changes and looking at where there might be some, there could be some positive modifications. And that concludes the presentation. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for all the hard work. Really appreciate it. I want to open it up to the council for questions and comment. And then at the same time, I also wanted to let you kind of address the council a little bit more about the specific strategies and recommendations on how to support lot consolidation, because frankly, you know, it, this has been something that, that I've been championed for and working on since 2020 when I first got elected. And what makes me more interested in seeing this is that this needs to become a way and a tool to help us revitalize our downtown and change the streetscapes of our downtown and how to encourage lot consolidations and lot coalescing so that we can better utilize and, you know, our valuable land resources, which, you know, we only have a limited amount of them. And we all know downtown is, a lot of property currently is underutilized. They're not going, they're not being developed, you know, to the extent that it can be. And by encouraging that and incentivizing that, that would sort of help our economic vitality moving forward in our downtown, bring up our better businesses and more, more vitality, more activities. And it also needs to fold into, you know, our future strategy, you know, for economic development as well. So to that end, if you can just help, you know, be a little bit more, give us a little bit more details on this, you know, how you support lot consolidation, especially on Broadway.
Yeah, I mean, lot consolidation can be, you know, time consuming, you're dealing with different owners, right? Who might have different ideas or, you know, some might want to sell, some may not, some may be holdouts. So for developer, it's a little bit of a difficult situation to deal with multiple parties and try to time property acquisition so that you can assemble a property and you're not carrying it for a long time, or you're not paying way more for one than you are for another. So having, providing a little bit more of the market rate units, again, provides more profit as part of the development project that can then be used to mitigate that extra time, because time is money, right? Especially if you are getting loans and financing things. So the less interest you have to pay on your financing, and there's less risk, because as I said, the market can change. The market's been very positive for the most part, but the market can change two or three years down the line. And so I think when developers, you know, they're looking at forecasts and things like that, but it's not a guarantee. So additional profit from additional market rate units through an extra cities, city density bonus can help also mitigate and buffer that risk. So development happens, you know, when things pencil. And I say that in air quotes, but what it means is that the revenues exceed the costs. Developers have, investors a lot of times, who require a certain rate of return. So part of looking at successful, successfully incentivizing development is to make sure that costs can be covered, including interest rates that might change. So I think that's, that's the incentive, is that there is a little bit of buffer than to go and do that lot consolidation with those extra market rate units that the state doesn't provide. Because you would be offering that, and maybe the cities, other cities in San Mateo County are not. It's, I haven't seen a lot of cities offer additional density bonus on top of the state, except for very, very high percentage of affordable units. That's just been my experience. But not for like 5% low or additional moderate income units. And the delta on the difference between the rents and prices is a little bit less than it is with very low. So that's even more incentive for developers. So I think that you would be unique in that way, and I think you would attract more investment because of the bonus on top of the bonus. And that is a way to mitigate some of the market factors we've talked about with higher interest rates, some of the rent growth stagnated the last couple of years and things like that.
Yeah, and, you know, also, just also want to bring about the light that many of the properties on Broadway, for example, you know, they're a smaller lot, 25 by 100, and many of whom, if they even wanted to develop it, they may not be qualified for state density bonus program because they're less than 10 units. And so to that end, you know, we also need to look at other tools such as, you know, maybe modifying our density, right? Number of units per acre along the Broadway corridor and how to strategically modify that or increasing that so that they too can also get developed sooner rather than later. Because we really wanted to see our downtown to be fully utilized. And that will speak to the economic vitality that we're looking for. So I think those are some of the strategies at which I think as part of this discussion, as we continue moving forward in this discussion, analyzing how we can increase or modify our units per acre along our downtown corridor on specific streets would be very valuable. All right, council, I just want to give everybody an opportunity to weigh in on this. Council member, when?
So the, the document I think I'm looking at, I just want to confirm, there was a case study in San Francisco? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so with that said, did we take into the account the differences between San Francisco and Millbrae? And how we're going to approach the differences with this plan?
Yeah, no, that's a very good question. So I think what you're referring to specifically is the inclusionary housing study, which is your requirement for affordable units when market rate development happens. What, you know, San Francisco was very impacted by COVID. They still have the highest commercial office vacancy rate in the nation. So that still continues to persist. Development has, has changed there and slowed down. And so our case study, the purpose of that was to show that, you know, cities are starting to look at when development is not happening at, at the pace that they'd like to see to meet state mandates for housing and other factors like economic revitalization, as the mayor had mentioned. Looking at what those regulations are for inclusionary is an important step. I believe what they found was similar to what we said about your rental existing inclusionary. Because interest rate changed, construction costs changed, and rents changed, and the growth didn't match the costs, the growth in rent, that theirs didn't pencil anymore either. And so what they did is they reacted to that and then they reduced the amount of inclusionary. Because inclusionary is, you know, to, you have to do it by jurisdiction, because rents can be different and prices can be different, one city to the next city. So that, that analysis really should be done for each individual jurisdiction. And in the work we do, we work for cities and counties all over California. We do housing elements, we do development economic studies, all this stuff. What we're seeing is, is that existing inclusionary and especially when it's at lower levels is not penciling as well in many communities. And there have been talks, there hasn't been necessarily as much action, but I see that as something that will continue to happen if inflation persists the way it does, unless prices and rents go up, which that's a difficult balance too, because it's already unaffordable. But those economic factors are starting to, the reckoning is starting to happen, and I think that development has slowed down enough that cities are looking at this now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the presentation and all of the work that you did on this. I'm going to start with the inclusionary requirement and just say, you know, disappointed that you're not recommending going from the 15 to 20% affordable requirement, because that was something that was, I think, a council goal for several years now. It was included within the housing element. And also, if you look at, you know, the RENA allocations, they're very heavily weighted towards the low and the very low income as opposed to the market rate units. So I think going from 15% down to 8%, I think is kind of a step backwards, and I personally wouldn't support it this time. I think maybe, you know, we can stick at 15% and maybe wait a couple of years, see if maybe the interest rates improve, if inflation subsides, and then maybe try for the 20% again at that time. But at this point, I wouldn't support going forward with reducing it to 8%. And then I had a question about the density bonus. I'm looking at the chart that was in the report. It was, I think, page seven of your report. It's page 10 of the PDF, which shows like the project, rental project example. So, and I think you've discussed this in your presentation, but just looking at kind of side by side, without the city density bonus versus with the city density bonus and then the additional units. So all of the additional units are at the market rate level. So I'm thinking, in my opinion, I think if we were to do some type of a city density bonus, I, I think there should be a little bit more give and take, you know, instead of just saying, well, you could have more market rate units. I think there should be more, they should have to go greater than the, the state requirements at the affordable levels, right? I think to have a little bit more, you know, equity, more of a sort of give and take. Otherwise, it's just more of sort of a gift, in a sense, to developers, which could be a goal, I don't know, to, if the goal is to incent up, incentivize market rate units. That's just sort of my thoughts at this time. I don't know if there's any discussion about that or... So that's the direction I would like to see. If we're going to do some type of a city density bonus, it should be, okay, we can go, we could do more units, but I think part of that is that the developer has to increase their affordable contribution above what the state minimums are within the density bonus program.
Any further comment from the council? Council member, when?
Going back to the San Francisco case study, were there any like takeaways, any lessons learned from that that you can share from, from that case study?
The only thing I would say there is it's been pretty recent, so we don't really have a track record on how it's changed development to go down. But I would, I would say that the primary lesson learned is that I think when they saw that development slowed down, they decided to take another look. I don't think they would have reduced it without, you know, some concern over, is there a problem? Is, are things financially feasible? And then I think they reacted to what the economic analysis indicated in their case. And again, they, they've been hit pretty hard. I did want to respond to one thing, and what we've seen in some communities is that when inclusionary, when we do an analysis like this, and honestly, this type of analysis needs to be done when market factors change. It doesn't have to be a full blown study, but at least a pro forma run on some of the prototypes, because one percentage point in interest rate can make a difference, you know, or rent changes in rents, things like that, point in time look. But if the inclusionary is high, the thinking is it may discourage market rate development, but it would also mean that that market rate development wouldn't be meeting your inclusionary. So with no development, there would be no affordable units produced. Whereas with the reduced inclusionary requirement, you would have some, you wouldn't have as many as under the original, but that's the, the economic perspective of that, that you would have very low and low units for rental, for example. You know, some of them, where you may have none, keeping it at the 15%. So we, we wouldn't recommend, you know, this was the, the highest percentage that penciled for all four prototypes that we looked at with a reasonable buffer to where one small market change wouldn't render it, you know, financially infeasible. We were very careful to do that, and that was the highest point where it did pencil for all four.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a comment? You look like you do.
Well, okay, so this is study session.
Right.
And I'm going to roll my sleeves here a little bit. Why does California have a housing deficit? Why do Senator Scott Wiener have, you know, all of these legislations forcing cities to build housing and it's not being done? Could it be because it doesn't work? Could it be because it's not feasible? You can mandate 20%, but it's not, there's, it's not going to be built. So 20% of nothing versus 8% of something. Right? And, and you got to ask yourself, is it because the policies of the state of California that every city, every city council just follows each other and goes, okay, sounds good, but it doesn't get built? There's been a huge shift since the dissolution, dissolution of redevelopment. The 15% came from redevelopment law. And it, it, it used to be that in a redevelopment agency, when you build a housing project and government using tax increment financing participates in the project, 15% was required. So that's, that's where that number came from. And it was feasible because government agencies, local redevelopment agencies could use a tax increment and write down the cost of land, write down the cost of labor, write down the cost to, to make it feasible. Since 2012, that's been eliminated. That, that tool is no longer afforded to local municipalities. That's another reason why these policies for inclusionary housing and affordable housing aren't working, right? That's, that's why we're not seeing it built. So I just want the council to kind of think about production of housing, our need for housing, the incentive. production of housing, our need for housing, the incentives in on Broadway and the downtown. How do we make that work? And how do we, as a city, kind of lead the charge like we have in other local ordinances? And and see if it works. And if it if it doesn't work, we can evaluate as those variables in the market change, then then we can come back, right? Always kind of adapt to it. But there's a reason why we have, what, two million houses short of what we need in California, probably less now because people are moving out. But I I think we really need to think about the policy. Now, if it's to disincentivize development, then I think, you know, you keep it at twenty percent. You can wait for the market to change and all that. But I just, I get nervous because the state of California, you know, is there there are many cities that are being sued for not having their housing element adopted or certified, many housing, and many municipalities being sued for not developing housing. And then there's a reason where cities don't build housing, right? We just create the opportunity to build housing. I just really want the council to think about that.
Yeah, and and next time, I'm going to patent some of the things I said before I let someone else talk because, you know, you're right, City Manager. Twenty percent of nothing.
Mr. Mayor, that's on the record, by the way.
Yeah. So eight percent of, you know, two hundred units, sixteen units, where sixteen family, right? Who has limited means can move into our community where if you mandate twenty or twenty-five or thirty percent, whatever that might be, when nothing gets built, zero family can move in to this great community. And I just want to bring about these opportunities and and what, you know, at what lenses do we look at, you know, ordinance such as this? And what are we trying to accomplish, right? And I think that's, that's the light and that's the lenses at which we need to look through these discussions. Because at the end of the day, we want housing built. We don't just want to put out an ordinance that nobody is going to take advantage of. We want to get housing built, we want to put families in, and we want to make impactful changes and and conscientious steps forward to be a part of the solution to the housing crisis that we're now seeing in California. So, and as you already mentioned, you already done some of the analysis on the finances and why, you know, what would pencil out, what would not pencil out? And given that we still have a very sticky inflation, and and I think in a day or two, we'll find out if the Fed is going to keep the interest rate where they are, most likely they will. And, you know, it it's going to take quite a bit of time for us to work our interest rate back into a more normal cycle. If we ever get back there. And and that's some of the challenges that we as a country need to face. But then again, finding ways to incentivize these developments to actually take place, actually have housing coming out of the ground, having newer ground for commercial coming out of the ground so that we can actually better improve our downtown. That's the key and that's the ultimate goal of these ordinance, so.
Mayor, one other thought too, and I don't want to put you on the spot. We just sent a letter to one of our affordable housing projects as they compete for SIDLAC funding, which is a funding source in low interest, but the competition, last I heard, there were of a hundred plus projects that were competing. I think eight were actually funded. So the low income projects throughout the state are competitive, but there just is not enough revenue and funding sources to to fund all the projects. And so I I think it's, I want to say like around ten percent or so. There's a lot of applications that are submitted that aren't funded. And so this is another way to to not have builders compete in that arena and have a different policy to try to incentivize the production of housing.
Very well, okay. Any other comments? I mean, but I certainly would think, I mean, this is like what you said a moment ago. This is a study session, this is the beginning of this conversation. And and I do think that there's a value to, you know, maybe have a broader community meeting with some of the local property owners in in the downtown especially, because that's what this legislation intends to serve. There will be most benefit from it. So having a bit of a town hall meeting where you can bring about a greater audience with all the stakeholders to come in and look at this would help shape the future of this legislation, some of the numbers and the directions where we where we need to go. And then we will get to hear directly from those who are writing the checks and actually getting the construction started, for those who are able to and get pencil out, what their what their sentiments are. You know, what is it that they need in order for, you know, this construction to actually coming out of the ground? Actually incentivizing them to buy multiple lots and actually, you know, getting an entitlement, getting them built so that families can move in. Because until and unless we hear from them as well, you know, that's where the value of the conversation that we can actually benefit from, so.
Yeah, Mayor, and and just just for the public that may be listening, you know, in the staff report on page one, the state mandate for the city of Millbrae is twenty-two hundred units between now and twenty thirty-one. So that's what the state, and and every year we have to report on our housing production. And and so the state measures each municipality as to the production of housing. And they'll come in and they'll, I mean, they're getting stricter and stricter, right? They'll come in and and audit, for lack of a better word. Why hasn't there been any housing being produced in a in a particular city relative to the oversight of HCD on our housing element? You've probably heard and you can read, you know, some cities have been sued by the state of California on their housing element for for lots that, you know, they put in that they thought that it could develop and and it hasn't been able to be developed. So I just, you know, just just as we think about that, let's, you know, it's a it's a dynamic process rather than a static process. But I do get concerned because the state of California is pretty heavy handed. And I don't want to get fined or have any of our local revenue contribute to some other thing that governor or the Attorney General, somebody would come knocking on our door and take our money and feed it to another city or something like that. So there's, the the game is changing and and I've got great concern about that, actually.
Any other council comments? Maybe we should take some public comment? I don't have any speaker slip at length, however.
There is no speaker slip on this item and also no hands raised online.
Okay, all right. I do believe that, you know, this discussion is, it's moving in the right direction, but it certainly would be beneficial if we can have a greater audience with some of the stakeholders, local property owners, Broadway, Alcomino Real property owners, who might be, you know, able to benefit from this. We want to incentivize these folks to take advantage of it. The question is, what would be the right incentive for them to make a move? To actually finally develop these properties so that we can, as a city, we can benefit from not only the economic resilience and vitality, but also producing housing that we desperately need. All right. Anyone else before we close it out? No?
So, Mayor, if I may, it it sounds like the direction of the council this evening is to to go out, do do a little bit more research in terms of
Outreach.
Home builder outreach, home builders, the community sentiment.
Yes.
And then bring back some of that information to the city council.
And then bring it back for an ordinance.
Community means are important, but also I'm just sitting here and I'm talking out loud, but even even a builder summit or or something like that that we can that we can host and bring in. Because, look, I I mean, like I said, residential is not being built. So you got the market saying we're not building, and you got the state of California saying, build, build, build. And if you don't, we're going to come and 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 sue you. And it just, it just doesn't make sense. So I think getting that public private partnership.
Yes.
Rekindled and and relit is key.
Yeah, so you bring up a good point about having a developer summit, but yeah, I want to just make sure we are on the same page in terms of the intent of this is to, this is, this legislation is intended to benefit and incentivize our local property owners, Broadway, Alcomino Real, who incentivize these developments to take place. So I think they are the first one that we should reach out to and getting them involved, getting them discussion with them, maybe have a town hall with them. And then bring, you know, all the stakeholders who, you know, we believe could be beneficial, could benefit from these legislations as well. You know, what do they feel about it? How do they see this being useful to them? What must we do in order for this to become useful to them? So that we can bring in these investments.
That actually clarifies something, so, okay, I'm glad you, I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, yep, okay. Is that, this this direction sounds good to the council? Councilmember Rinaldi, thank you, thank you for the comment.
Yes.
Yes, and yes. Okay, sure from the Vice Mayor and a head nod from Councilmember C.C. Riley. Thank you so much for your hard work, and we look forward to more discussion on this, more to come. Thank you. Okay, item number ten, informational report regarding Citizens Oversight Committee for the first, for the fire assessment and transient occupancy tests. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Mr. Mike Sung.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members. Today, we're going to talk about the Citizens Oversight Committee and the informational report here. Next slide, please. So just as a little background, the fire assessment was reauthorized back in June of two thousand and twenty-four for ten more years, for a ten year period. As part of the provision of the fire assessment, the Citizens Oversight Committee was to be established to review the assessment and to provide input. Next slide, please. So a little bit more information on this. We actually had a series of community meetings, approximately about five or six, in early to mid two thousand and twenty-four. And we did receive some suggestions for the Citizens Oversight Committee. A couple of the suggestions we were looking at were having an odd number of committee members, either five or seven. Seven seems to be one that a lot of people had liked, one for each district plus two at large. And also a a look at the number of meetings we would have, the frequency. So two seemed to be a good amount to look at. Next slide, please. So what we have here is an application process for those that are actually interested in serving on the committee. So please visit the website listed below and basically fill out the form, return it to the city clerk's office. There's also going to be hard copies that are available at City Hall. It's the standard form for most of our committees and commissions. We do ask that if anybody's interested, there's one more little box to mark which district you're in. A little bit easier for us to follow that. Next slide, please. So just kind of a process timeline, really, really briefly. January, you're going to receive this informational report. Between February and March, we'll have staff conduct outreach and community meetings to the public. Then initiate the application process, we'll continue to do that and meet with the subcommittee to review applicants. And we're going to we come, we're going to come back in April to report out from the subcommittee and recommend to the council to vote and approve the committee members. And moving forward, we're suggesting to take a look at July and January as meeting dates, mainly because it aligns with how the revenues come in. January mainly because after the December property tax assessment and direct charges rolls, all of that information kind of comes in. Assessment comes in during that time period. And July, about the same time as well, so you can kind of see about what fifty percent would look like in the next fifty percent. That's why we're recommending the timing to kind of look like that. Next slide. So with that, our brief presentation is over and I'm open for any questions.
Council. No? Okay, go ahead.
Quick question, don't want to take up too much time. I'm just a quick question, why, I understand the fire assessment, I think it was was written into the language, right, that there would be a citizens oversight. TOT, that's just goes into the general fund, so I'm curious why that's included.
So for the TOT, it's also our second largest general fund source. We're actually adding that on there too as well. I believe that's actually something to look at as well. I think our city clerk.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, so when we took to the voters the increase of the TOT from twelve to fourteen percent, that same language was added in to the legislation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any public comments? I don't have any hand raised, I don't have any slips.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. All right, I guess we did such a good job. All right. So I think this is an action item, I think we need to accept the report of the cities, of the Citizens Oversight Committee for the fire assessment and the TOT. Unless anybody have any comments or questions or. I'll make a motion to accept the report. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Hi.
Councilmember Riley.
Hi.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holliver.
Hi.
Mayor Feng.
Hi.
Item number ten, pass five, vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much. Item eleven, discuss and appoint council member to serve on regional county and city boards, committee commissions, and ad hoc subcommittees for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five and beyond. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will hand it over to our city clerk, Ms. Elaine Tran, for a presentation and overview of selection.
Ms. Tran?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. This is a presentation on the City Council assignments for calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. Next slide, please. In January of each year, the City Council discussed the council ad hoc subcommittee assignments and assignments to regional county and city boards, commissions, and committees. Majority of these assignments are appointed by the mayor with with exception of the council ad hoc subcommittees. The mayor provides appointment recommendation to the ad hoc subcommittees with majority approval by motion of the City Council. Staff survey the City Council for the desired assignments, then compile the council preferences submitted to staff into a consolidated spreadsheet for the mayor. Then the mayor provide his recommendation to staff based on council feedback for the agenda report publication. Next slide, please. Mayor Feng recommends the two thousand and twenty-five City Council ad hoc subcommittee assignments considering of two council members for each subcommittee as follows. Budget appropriation, Mayor Feng and Vice Mayor Holliver. Commission committee appointment, Mayor Feng and Councilmember Riley. Economic development, Mayor Feng and Councilmember Riley. Infrastructure environmental sustainability, Vice Mayor Holliver and Councilmember Nguyen. Land use, Mayor Feng and Councilmember Rinaldi. Legislative, Mayor Feng and Vice Mayor Holliver. Parking authority, Vice Mayor Holliver, Councilmember Nguyen. Public safety, Mayor Feng and Councilmember Rinaldi. Rules, Mayor Feng and Councilmember Rinaldi. And technology, it'll be Vice Mayor Holliver and Councilmember Nguyen. Next slide, please. Now we move on to mayoral appointments where council member represents city in regional commissions, boards, and regarding various matters. These appointments ensure Millbrae has a voice in important discussion across the region. So then the first item is Airport Community Roundtable. The delegate is Councilmember Rinaldi, alternate, the alternate will be Councilmember Riley. And then Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG, General Assembly, is Councilmember Rinaldi as a delegate and Councilmember Riley as the alternate. CKAG, which is City County Association of Governments Airport Land Use Committee, the delegate will be Councilmember Rinaldi and alternate would be Councilmember Nguyen. And then CKAG Board of Directors will be Mayor Feng as the delegate and Vice Mayor Holliver as the alternate. Caltrain Local Policy Group, the delegate would be Councilmember Nguyen and the alternate will be Vice Mayor Holliver. Millbrae Community Liaison, the delegate would be Councilmember Riley and the alternate will be Councilmember Rinaldi. Millbrae Community Television Liaison is Councilmember Nguyen as delegate and alternate is Councilmember Riley. Millbrae School District Liaison is Councilmember Riley and the alternate will be Councilmember Nguyen. Next slide. And Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance, commute.org Board of Directors. The delegate will be Mayor, sorry, Vice Mayor Holliver and alternate is Councilmember Nguyen. And then Peninsula Clean Energy Joint Powers Authority Board of Directors. Delegate will be Mayor Feng and the alternate will be Councilmember Nguyen. San Mateo Council of Cities, City Selection Committee. Delegate will be Mayor Feng and alternate will be Vice Mayor Holliver. San Mateo County Library Joint Power Authority Governing Board. The delegate will be Vice Mayor Holliver and alternate will be Councilmember Rinaldi. San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services Council. The delegate will be Councilmember Rinaldi and the alternate will be Vice Mayor Holliver. And then the last one will be San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Joint Powers Authority. The delegate will be Vice Mayor Holliver and count, and alternate is Councilmember Rinaldi. Next slide. Next slide. Finally, we have the council liaison assignments for the city commissioning committees. City council member also liaison and attend assigned commission and committee meetings throughout the year. And the Mayor Civic Corney Council is liaison is Mayor Feng. The alternate is Vice Mayor Holliver. Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee is Vice Mayor Holliver and alternate is Councilmember Rinaldi. Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee is Vice Mayor Holliver as liaison and alternate is Councilmember Rinaldi. Millbrae Economic Development Advisory Committee is Councilmember Nguyen and the alternate is Councilmember Riley. Millbrae Parks and Recreation Commission, the liaison is Councilmember Rinaldi and the alternate is Vice Mayor Holliver. Millbrae Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, BPAC, the liaison is Councilmember Rinaldi and Vice Mayor Holliver as the alternate. Millbrae Senior Advisory Committee, the liaison is Councilmember Riley, alternate is Councilmember Rinaldi. And then the Millbrae City Council, sorry, Millbrae Sister Cities Commission, pardon me, vice is Vice Mayor Holliver and alternate is Councilmember Nguyen. Millbrae Social Equity and Cultural Inclusion Commission, the liaison is Councilmember Nguyen and alternate is Mayor Feng. And Millbrae Youth Advisory Committee, the liaison is Councilmember Riley and alternate is Councilmember Nguyen. Next slide, please. The council action tonight is to, first, discuss and take action by motion on the mayor's recommendation for the council ad hoc subcommittee appointments for calendar year 2025. And number two is discuss the mayor's recommended appointments to serve on regional county and city boards, commission committees. This concludes the staff presentation. We're happy to answer any question or provide clarification as needed.
Thank you so much for this detailed report. Yeah, so I received all the interest form from all the council members and thank you for providing all of that. And I try to do everything I can to give you the committees and the commissions that you like to serve on. You know, it's recognizing that we do have three council members who, the first time relatively speaking, serving in a public capacity. And it's just to kind of make sure that we have everybody an opportunity to serve on these regional position, which is kind of important. So if you look at, you know, I believe, you know, you have applied for ABAG, regional boards, and therefore I thought it would benefit if I get you assigned to the ABAG General Assembly as well. And among other things, that was on your interest form also, Vice Mayor, you have a number of interests. You know, I believe you have served on Commute Outwork before, you're talking about last time? Relatively effective there, so I thought, you know, coming back to have you be in the same capacity would be highly beneficial to Millbrae as well, and which is also top on your interest form, same as the library, a joint power authority. So, and so just all in all, I try to accommodate as much as I can, but also realizing that some of the ad hoc subcommittees tend to be a little bit more heavier between the Vice Mayor and myself, because, you know, there's a lot of policy discussions in there and a lot of policy decision that needs to be recommended to the full council for discussion. So I think some, to a certain degree, you know, being on the council for a good number of years sort of helps guide those discussion. And hopefully, you know, in the years ahead, all the other council members can also take greater leads in these discussion moving forward. So that's the spirit at which I look at some of these decisions and recommendations that I have today. But this is a democracy. I want to make sure everybody is comfortable with it. And any recommendations, any comment, would love to entertain it at this moment. Don't be shy.
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Feng, for taking the time to look through all of our recommendations. On looking through this agenda item, I see no objections to anything in particular that I'm assigned to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Rinaldi. Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the assignments. You know, having done this in the past, it's sometimes not the easiest job to have to...
This is not such difficult, I hope.
Yeah, but thank you. I mean, it's a lot, but we need to utilize the alternates every now and then. Don't be afraid to do that if you're unable to make one of these meetings and ask your alternate.
Yes.
Especially on the regional boards. It's always good to have somebody from Millbrae there.
Thank you. To your point there, and I thank you for bringing that up, because I'm also on Peninsula Clean Energy. And I stay, and I put myself back on Peninsula Clean Energy, not because I want to go to all the meeting, but I would love to, although I would certainly love to have Councilmember Nguyen's help on the general meeting once a month on a Thursday evening, because I'm also on the executive board and also on the legislative committees on PCE, which was very helpful in terms of pushing the legislations as well as, you know, formulating sort of more of a think tank as the executive board as we recommend policies to the full board for adoptions in those arena. You know, it does take a while to get to know all those things. But as you, you know, participate more on the general meeting on every month on a Thursday evening, you do sit through three hours, that's a lot to learn, and it's a complicated business. So, and I'm hopeful that you'd be able to pick that up with a good background, to be able to pick that up pretty quickly. And I did also mention that to Mr. Mark Hirschman about that, you know, my intent. So hopefully, we can also catch him more acquainted with the team as quickly as possible here. And, yeah, so that's kind of what I have for you all. Ms. Riley, you're pretty comfortable. Are you okay? Okay, all right. Any further comments? Any public comments on this item?
No public comment online or in person.
Okay, excellent. Otherwise, this is an action item, and unless any changes are requested, I'd like to entertain motions.
Motion to approve the assignments?
Thank you. Councilmember Rinaldi, we have a second from Councilmember Nguyen as well. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Hi.
Councilmember Riley?
Hi.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Hi.
Mayor Feng?
Hi.
Item number 11 passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you very much, and I believe all the committees and commission members are looking forward to their new liaisons. You know, we have a little bit of a challenge and a vacuum because since the recall last year with only three council members and certain committees and commissions are not getting their liaison. So I'm looking forward to having all these positions filled and getting back on productivity as quickly as possible here. Thank you for the council, for your cooperation. So that's the end of tonight's agenda, and that leads us to council comment. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Just like to thank everyone who stood all the way till the end and endured this council meeting tonight. Also extremely looking forward to working with these new committees, commissions, and regional boards.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Anyone else? No comments? Ms. Riley, do you have anything?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Nguyen?
So I had a chance to attend Cal Cities last week, and it was pretty enlightening because we got to meet a lot of council members, newly elected and appointed council members. And the challenges they face are fairly similar to what we're facing. Just want to share that with the community that we've learned quite a bit and we hope to be able to use what we've learned there for Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Since I see in the audience, Mr. Ron Recal is here. I just want to bring about one discussion is that recently, and thank you for all your comments, for all these years that, you know, you have for us and consistently advocating for better traffic safety at intersections of Millbrae Avenue and Magnolia. And I just want to report that, you know, at the end of last year, December, we received funding from Transportation Authority, I think $675,000 and change, to make that intersection a little safer. And, you know, we just want to tell you, since you're here tonight, that we heard you, we're working on it, and we now found the funding to implement some of the traffic calming and safety at the intersection that you brought to our attention. And I want to thank you very much for your advocacy. Yeah, all right. So to that end, I think that's it for the evening. And I adjourned this meeting tonight at 9:56 PM. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you for the reminder. It's, there's a little bit of a sad news that a longtime community member, John Walker, who, right, who served on the planning commission. And in fact, when I first joined the planning commission, I think it was about seven and a half years ago, almost eight years ago now, it's Commissioner John Walker, who was the chair of the planning commission at the time. And I received much of the training and his counsel and his directions. He's a great mentor, and he recently passed away peacefully at the age of 82 in St. Joseph, Michigan. And he was surrounded by his beloved wife of 58 years, March Walker, and daughter Suzanne. So we are going to miss you, but we're also thankful for his service to the city of Millbrae. And we close tonight's meeting in memory of Mr. John Walker. Good night, 9:57 PM.